Oops, sorry, you ready?
Sorry.
Go ahead and give everybody had a moment to read over the minutes from the previous meeting. Any corrections, updates, if not is there a motion to approve?
I'm.
Move by Justin?
Second.
Second by Kale, all in favor? Alright, so move. New business Cindy, you're up.
Okay. I am here to see if I can get some help solving an issue with the alley. Where are you? Um, so when we first moved in there, we put in that private drive and we've always kept that rock and we've always kept that up. Um, and, um, since then rock has gotten super expensive. And so I just put in a half a load here not too long ago and it run me about fourteen hundred. Used to be you could get a full load for a thousand. And then, um, we kind of always kind of put it like where we come up our, that garage also and then up a little bit. And so the problem is, is the trash truck has always had permission to use our private drive. And so I had gone in to visit, um, and she said that would be passed on. Um, I'm not willing to fork out that kind of money every two years to have the trash truck tear that up from here on out. Um, also when I back out of my drive because we are a low, so crimes go up and then you go to Becky Robertson's. So everything that mounts, everything that come down sits right where I back out of my drive, which is the alley, which is a huge mess. Um, this year after that huge rain, I went and got five gallon, five gallon buckets of dirt and smashed it in there and cluttered it down and smashed it in there. I physically cannot be doing that. So, which was on me, I had never asked you guys for help on that. This is just what, so I had put this rock in here, the ground's still actually frozen here. But then by the time the ground unthaws, that rock gets pushed down so far now that you can't even see my rock anymore.
So you're talking about coming off the alley to your garage?
So this is right, well, this is my road, this is our private road that comes down. I have a rock clear up to my drive. But as soon as you back out, then everything on the alley side is nothing but a big, um, mud mess. It's just a pool of, because of all the moisture coming down. The way the alley is because I'm the low pump point, everything drains off. So I can't even back out of my driveway anymore. And before we just took care of it, well, situations have changed and now I don't feel like I can keep that up. Um, so I don't know if you guys can help me figure out how we're gonna solve this big mud pool every time it rains, every time it smoo- uh. And I also feel like I'm putting all this money out and that trash truck is just smashing all that rock so far down that it's not. So it is a private drive, so I do have the option of saying they can't use it anymore, which I think is.
Are they coming up the private drive or are they coming up the alley?
No, they, they, so La Barge's, they only pick up La Barge's, which is on, what, the north side, south side. And then they pick up Becky Robertson's and then they pick up, um, Schultz's. So they come down First Street and they come down and they get one side. And then they come back around and then they do, I don't know, and then everybody else on that block.
Holds it up front.
Is trash was out front, so I don't know why those three are in the back and then the rest of us are in the front. Um.
Yeah, I know.
So when I was in the office last week, it was kind of just decided for the time being that the trash truck cannot use my private drive anymore. They're gonna have to back up, figure it out, because I suggested that and that was at the time decided that that's what they did until we have a meeting, you know, that that's something we should probably do. So I don't know, it's gonna be a pain in the ass for your trash truck to do that, I will tell you that. But I can't keep putting out fourteen hundred dollars every two years for rock. Plus, I can't have that big pool of mud for me, I can't even get up the alley if I wanted to, which I don't even go up the alley if it snowed or rained or anything, there's no way I could get up there and then that trash truck just comes through there and just, and then it's just a pool of mud. So I don't know how to fix that and how to work with you guys on that. And then number two, and I've never had to pick a trash can up when you guys had hired out. And I was told that this was not their problem, it is the problem of La Barge's. But, um, every week since the city has taken over the trash, they tell us where to put our trash cans, but they cannot get La Barge's where it goes. Every week I have to go and I have to move La Barge's trash can and put it back because it's in the middle of the, I don't think that's La Barge's fault. So if they can't get it back up there, the previous people could, there's a problem. Number three, this goes to Dan. I do not appreciate you calling my neighbors to see if I really own that private drive. If you needed to know that, you should've talked to me.
I just asked them.
It's none of their business, I shouldn't have to be stopped at a basketball game and have people wonder why I'm having so many problems with you guys, we haven't even met. That should not have been anybody's business, if you needed to know whose private drive that was, you should've went over to the courthouse and asked, or you should've personally called me. You don't go outside and ask neighbors. And I should not have to be stopped in a basketball game around all these people wondering what kind of problems I'm all having when we haven't even had a meeting.
Didn't say anything about problems, so.
Well, but they did, because you called them and wanted to know if that was really my drive.
I just asked if your drive, that's all.
But why did you even involve any-
Once they said it was, was.
Why did you involve anybody else? You have access to the courthouse, why didn't you call me?
So here's, here's the deal.
Let's just, let's just stop, he did contact the courthouse, he did contact me to verify who owned it.
After or before he asked?
I don't know, but this is a mute point of why, like.
I just don't think I should have to be stopped at basketball games and have everybody think that I'm having all these issues with you guys over the city because he went to Matt's mall and asked him all if I really owned that.
Who's LeBard, I asked, I mean. But from now on, we're not gonna use your drive, we're gonna back our trash truck in from the other end.
Alright, perfect.
But if we cross it on the alley, in the alley, the alley is ours.
Then you.
As long as we don't turn on your drive, the alley is ours.
But then you need to somehow help keep that alley up so it's not a mud hole, because you're rutting it so bad with that trash truck that it's not a well, you, you're not even trying, I'm not trying to fight you, I'm just saying, is there a way we can work together?
I have had other people ask me if they could run through alley. And I told them, they could do what they want, but I will not, the city's not gonna replace rock every time something happens. We have to go in.
You've never put rock in there, we've always handled that.
I never said we did.
But I'm saying.
I'm not, that's not what I said at all, so.
But you're gonna tell me you guys can't help take care of those ruts so that I could even back out of my drive when, when I drive?
We can help, we can help, but I'm not gonna have you telling me when I need to be there, 'cause I can't always get there when you think I should be there.
I didn't say that.
So.
I had personally asked if you guys could bring in dirt once a year.
You didn't ask me.
No, I asked Jen. But then you didn't ask me if that was my land either, did you? You asked Madison Mall.
No, that's what I'm saying, I asked somebody else, so did you, so.
So what's the difference? Because that's who we're supposed to go to to get our, to set up, that's, she's the city treasurer, who was I supposed to go to?
I'm not gonna sit here and argue about, we're not, we're, the city's not gonna replace your rock unless these guys want to replace your rock. If that's what you guys wanna get into, we can do that.
I didn't ask you to replace my rock, I asked you to help come up with a solution to fix all those ruts right pulling to my back driveway, because it is just one big pool of mud when it rains and when it snows. Because the way the alley is set up, everything runs down because I'm the low point.
And we, and we have situations all over town where there's drainage issues through alleys up here. I mean, if you drive through back here behind City Hall, we have issues all over town when you have heavy rains and snows and we do the best we can to maintain the alleys. I mean, w-
What about the, the asphalt chunks, I think, what's that called again?
Millings?
Millings, yeah.
Want to, want to workshop?
It will eventually.
Eventually, but with.
Is it gonna do the same thing that Rocky does?
Yeah.
Because of, because of the way it is back there, which, I don't know if it's true or not, somebody said Miller's put up an illegal wall, whether they did or not, I have no idea, it was already there. And then, um, well, just the way it sits, so we had run this huge slab of cement so that we know all that's gonna come down, because it was getting up, it didn't go into our house, but it flooded out everything in the back, so we did lay a bunch of cement to try to get that to go out to the front when it rains, because it literally just floods out our whole backyard, I mean, our whole backyard's underwater. We've just kind of lucked out. So I don't know, I would imagine eventually that asphalt would just be a mess in my backyard, just like the dirt is right now, it's just a mud pool back there when it, when it, I don't know. But I, when I went in, I was just asking if they could put dirt in like once a year and pack it, so those ruts weren't so bad.
Is it gonna seal the millings? Like, puts a, like maybe.
Put cement chips.
Yeah, just maybe raise that alley up, put a whole bunch of millings, pack it and then seal it.
Small piece of millings is gonna wash out cement chips or compact it.
Yeah. It's fine.
That's how many other allergies you can do that to.
Dirt's just gonna be a, a mess.
Yeah.
I know they're gonna be needed everywhere probably, but it's better than nothing, I think.
And what we do, what we can do, try to maintain the alley as best we can with every other alley and, you know, this last year we had a lot of rain and we had a lot of, a lot of issues.
A lot of war.
Yeah, between the snow last year and the rain this spring and. But, I mean.
Okay, well, let's just use it so that, um, I guess, I'm gonna close off my private road to everybody, we've got a, I just didn't notice it because I've been outside school, but there's a lot of people who use that, I don't know why they're using it, I don't know why they're back there, they don't even have anything to do with our neighborhood or, I don't, I don't even know why they would drive that.
I don't think they know it, it is a private road.
You don't know why.
Doesn't say it's posted, a private road?
No, it's not posted, we've always just, whoever uses it.
And could, could the truck avoid the whole alley and just pick up everything up front?
It would be hard on Becky, she's got five trash cans, that would be hard.
Oh, hers is in the alley?
Yeah.
Oh.
That would be super hard on Becky Robertson.
That's right.
I mean, I hate to see, my, we have awesome neighbors everywhere, so I don't wanna inconvenience my neighbors and Becky, that would be, that would be, does she have five trash cans at least?
Yeah, four or five.
That would be a lot on her to try to, and where hers are at is kind of protected so they wouldn't blow, you know, she wouldn't have to chase them, wouldn't have to blow. And then Schultz's is just right next door and then La Barge's are just right across from there.
Yeah, if we can back in for those, I think that's why we'll.
I think we're gonna use the reload truck. We got two guys on it, things back in there and get, get.
Dump them.
So you don't have to turn around?
No, they'll just back you in and, yeah.
Dump them.
All the alleys, all the trash cans are on that part of the alley by College Street, so.
Yeah, there's just.
The only thing we would have to ever go in there for is electric problems or something like that.
Okay, yep. We'll see what we can do as far as keeping the alleys maintained as best we can.
Well, just that big mud puddle once it, yeah. I mean, and then like I said, I think, I'm gonna go ahead, it's gonna have to get warmer, but I am gonna put up something with the chain and stuff that says private so that they, so that nobody can use that alley, or not the alley, but use
Your drive.
My drive anymore, uh-huh. But I didn't know if people, we have that big huge empty lot right there. So I don't know if people would just go around and pull on that empty lot and still drive, I mean, I don't really know. I don't know if that would happen.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I mean.
Like I said, it shouldn't be a whole lot of people that would need up in that.
You would be surprised, the people that drive down there, I don't know why, like I said, there's nothing there.
Uh-uh.
I have no idea why. It's, it's kind of a busy, yeah. Even all the kids, it's kind of weird, the kids don't drive down it, but, and I understand this, 'cause I was a kid. You know, instead of walking around or going through the alley, they just come down my road and hop down my back stairs and they just walk home through to go to school, I have no idea who these kids are. But there's about five of them, I'm just like, whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not hurting anything, so, um, we were all kids, we all wanted to take the short distance when
Yeah.
it was yucky and cold out and they're nice kids, I mean, I don't know who they are, but they never.
I agree.
But yeah, let's just plan on not doing the trash truck and then let's just now and then, once a year, we could pack dirt in. There's summer, just to fix the ruts or something, once a year, packing in and, I don't know if it would hold or not. 'Cause I don't use the alley if it's wet or anything, I go up my, would that be feasible to do it once a year or?
Probably just depends on what we, you know, as far as the kind of moisture we have and what other issues we have in other alleys and, you know, just timeframe of getting to what we can get to, when we can get to it.
Okay.
And available supplies that you have, which.
Like I said, I didn't think once a year is asking a whole lot, just to pack some dirt in there. I mean, we'd have to pack it and get it wet and pack it, I mean, I would think, I don't know, that's how I did it, that's just 'cause that's the way somebody told me I had to do it, maybe you don't have to do it that way, I have no idea.
Yep, we'll do what we can to maintain it and we'll go from there.
And then from here on out, then that will just be a private drive.
Yep. Yep, alrighty, thank you Cindy. Alright Scott, you're up.
So this, pretty, oh, I'm Keisha's husband, I live down on Spencer Street and I've been, I'm moving my business here, I'm shutting down in Colorado, I don't come here. Been looking for a place to start a business and a shop and property and it's hard to find here. And after speaking with Dan, I found out about the lot behind Majestic on Cherry Street. And that's what I came to talk about. I did some rough drawings, kind of, that show what it is or what I'm planning, I'm looking at building a four thousand square foot building on the lot. And filling the lot in, it needs about four thousand yards of dirt to fill it in to keep it from flooding. Since it is a low spot in town.
Mm-hmm.
And redo the roads on, I don't know how you pronounce it, Felzine Street.
Felzine, yeah.
And Cherry Street, kind of recreate those a little bit, create some actual ditches through those so the road can be accessible on either end somewhat. And I guess that's what I'm looking to do and see what you guys' thoughts are. I've got enough for everybody.
Okay.
First page just shows kind of the rough layout of what I'd like to do with the building.
Could it be further to the west?
The west, just to, 'cause the majority of the water seems to go down Cherry Streets, I think it makes more sense to keep it away from that street, you know, for flooding issues.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Mm-hmm. And you would want the whole lot then?
Yes, if possible, just 'cause I have semis and stuff, that way I can have room for trucks and stuff. That's the second page, just kind of shows which way the water would shed off of the lot itself. And the way I figured it is that way the lot to the south, which still have, we'd have a ditch between the lots to flood, from the water to Felzine Street.
Is that the street, uh, picture?
Uh, it would be this one, so this goes by, this would be over by a USDA, uh, in, yeah, so
Okay.
like, but we saw Travis Jensen was here in the low, we saw Mike Davis, so his work is done, it's, it'll, on the front of the car.
How soon would you be putting the building up?
Uh, as soon as we got something figured out and ground thaws and price, that's.
Yeah. I think typically isn't it, usually there's a stipulation putting a deed that within a year.
Yeah. The time would, construction would start as soon as the ground thaws and then I would over the building as soon as I know
Mm-hmm.
and start there very shortly after, so hopefully by midsummer it would be done, in, in theory.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't, does anybody see a problem like this? I don't know the actual amount, do you know the amount of what we, we'd basically sell it for the same amount that we sold all the other lots up there.
Okay.
And it's something per square yard and so a square foot and so it's always a, but it's.
Yeah, what was it, like, three dollars or no, it wasn't even that much, was it?
I don't know.
I'd have put like four.
Do you have experiences? I think, I, mm-hmm, it's not that.
I know that whole lot might be eight hundred bucks, nine hundred bucks.
Mm, maybe, yeah.
Maybe.
But, and that would help just by bringing in that amount of dirt to make it a buildable site.
So.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, it's not much, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I can, yeah.
Is there any issues with drains, with what he's talking about? That you know, you're aware of?
No, no, he's having to build his building, he has something on flood.
Right.
But it kind of cuts it down on the east side, so if he's planning on kind of helping direct it.
For the most part.
Yeah, and right now it comes down from along Majestic and down through some lots and cuts across Cherry Street. So that's if we redid it all, I could recreate Cherry Street a little bit and get the water to flow more along one side or the other, so the road could, that section of the city wanted the road to be more accessible.
Down through there.
If it is now.
Yeah, it is not very accessible down there.
We're gonna hire you for some other projects.
I guess I don't see a problem with it, does anybody else do we want to?
No, I think we should probably get it rolling, figure out what that price was and.
Do we wanna approve it as is? Contingent on.
I approve the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, if we approve it, we can get Lauren to draw it up and I can get your number and call you tomorrow if that would work.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Um, if that works. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
So, last of the lot one in Industrial Park with the plans here contingent on, mm-hmm, uh, contingent on the price, as long as you're agreeable, but like I said, it's not that much. So Kale, move, does, Justin, second, all in favor?
Yep.
Okay, so move, I'll contact you and let you know the price, if it gets Lauren to draw up a deed and we can
Thanks, Dr.
get to the next meeting and then have to get you to get it filed and it'll be yours.
Perfect.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I don't know if you, if anybody's ever told you, but thanks for all the work you did on the old property.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah. Very welcome.
Yeah.
It's fun to be able to help do that.
Yeah.
Plus it was fun working next door to where I live.
You just stop and take your lunch break and, yeah, come back.
You're gonna do that, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Alright Shaylee, you're up.
Okay. Uh, you guys already have the profit and loss report and the proposed budget by the one I gave you, because of some library activities, there's two sides um, from the past year and then the ones who are planning for the coming year. And then for the profit and loss report, um, most of it I just kind of have there and if there's any questions. Um, I did wanna point out, um, for grants, we've seen a almost doubled increase from last year, so we're getting more of them, we're, I have learned how to write them, so um, we're hoping to see more of them in the coming year. Um, and that while we are negative, we are getting better, we were in negative nine thousand last year, so negative two thousand is much better than last year and we're hoping to get even better with more grants and everything, um, in the coming year.
Will we get the transfer moved over?
Yes, yep, yeah, and so this, and that was actually, yeah, so that'll be in January, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yep, and so, and we had money in there, we had a transfer from the end of December, so we were not actually negative, negative. But as far as profits and losses, we were, but we had a savings account, um, that has about fifty seven thousand in it that we were able to transfer some for the end of the year to get us until the first check. Thank you, good question, I'm glad you said that.
Any major projects or anything you're looking at next year?
Um, major projects, no, we're kind of trying to figure out, so since last year we just started like story hour um, and we're getting a better time for that, and so we'll see, we're changing the time, uh, and the like, we're doing it on different time, a different day. Um, we're trying to set that up a little more regularly. Um, the other thing that will be new is first through third graders, we, they were our one group that we were not um, hitting like on weekly, 'cause coding club has middle graders up to eighth grade and then high school, we tend to lose kids, we'll get them here and there for like kind of like little events, but we can't have, we can't seem to hold any for regular, um, weekly ones, and that's pretty normal in other libraries when we do little ones and story hours, so we are doing like a Lego after-school activity for first through third graders. Um, and we're trying to do that twice a month right now and see how that goes and if we need to change days um, and hours, and that'll be the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, um, from four P M. to five P M. Yeah, and so that's kind of our main one. Um, we did submit a grant for change, for updating all of our computers and we were turned down for that. Um, so this coming year, we are looking at possibly applying for a grant for that. Um, just 'cause our two circulation computers and our three public computers are outdated, um, as far as our regional library system recommends. But we are, they're still working, so they're still going, but, um, we are looking for grants for that, so we are, that is a big project, hopefully coming up. Um, but we won't, um, we won't continue on without grants for that.
That's what I was curious about, is equipment stuff, so.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, no, no, thank you guys, I, you guys do so much for us.
You wanna do it?
Any other questions for Shaylee? I think I died.
Did it work? Did it work?
Uh-uh, I'm dead.
It's charging, it's coming.
Yeah. Do you have anything else?
Uh, no, I just didn't know if you wanted me to go to proposed budget or anything, um.
Yeah, if you wanna go over that real quick and, anything out there, but.
Okay, there's, there's, yeah, not much to, um, I just, the one, the books and periodicals, we changed a little bit, um, as we have found that large print books are more popular, um, in this library, and so we are trying to cater more towards the residents and the large print requests are only increasing and they're slightly more expensive. Um, and then miscellaneous, I decreased the bud, the proposed budget for that a little bit, just 'cause there were some services that we needed um, done last year, so like, uh, fixing the gazebo, some things that hopefully we won't have to do going forward, um, 'cause they're in good condition now. Um, and otherwise, uh, I just really wanted to say thank you so much to you guys for, you know, the snow removal is such a big thing for us when we're opening and um, we just really appreciate it, and I know that the last time you guys sent a guy over and it's so cold out there and we just, you know, we had people coming up and it really means a lot to us and our patrons, um, your help with that and getting our lights rewired, so it is much brighter in there for everyone to see the spine wrinkles and everything as they go through. Um, and all of the just general repairs, um, that you guys had done for us, just wanted to say thank you so much and thank you, and that's it. Unless you guys have any questions or anything.
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the year transfers.
Can you get to it?
Is that up? Is that yours or mine?
I'll get mine.
Would you guys wanna explain the?
So, the end of year transfers that were approved by council, we went, took them back, I gave it to Jen for what you guys had previously approved. Uh, Jen noticed that the bond of interest for the debt service was not for this year's amount that is necessary to put out. Um, so we contacted Danielle in regards to how we could, uh, fix that. Um, she has informed us that all we have to do. Um, she has informed us that all we have to do, and I know I'm gonna say this as like it's a miniscule thing, it's not, um, but it's a journal entry, right?
Well, it's the whole, so there is a journal voucher involved, but it, um, I have a whole transfer, um, process I do.
It would just take the funds necessary from the infrastructure improvement fund. Um, and put what is necessary over into the bond and interest fund to cover the, the payments. Um, so what was given to you guys tonight is the new totals for those funds. I believe it's, yeah. Um, while we had Danielle, we also gave her the rest of the transfers and had her review them. Um, she did notice that there was an issue with the sewer transfers, uh, it would have, I'm not sure if it was going to create. A budget violation or, she wanted us to start with what was on our twenty twenty-four budget. Um, our opening cash amount and what we had, uh, had on there for the transfers did not allow us to have the eighteen seven. That was per our twenty twenty-four budget, so she requested us to correct that. And it just takes it from being transferred into the utility fund by, um. It was seventeen thousand six hundred that we would just move back out of the, well, yeah, out of the general back into the sewer fund. Um, so that we have that starting amount, the beginning cash balance. Um, the third thing Danielle noticed was that we have a really big opening, uh, balance in the general fund, which. I looked, last year we started with three hundred and fifty thousand, before that we were two hundred thousand and, or lower. Um, she has suggested that maybe backing some of those out or just like, uh, dispersing them into capital improvement, the, uh, equipment reserve. Leaving it in the utility fund for any items that may need to be there. Um, but that is just a suggestion and it could be. Any amount, I guess, right now that you guys would like? Cause per our twenty twenty-four budget balance, uh, we said we had on there that we were hoping to start with two hundred and fifty-two thousand. We actually opened with.
Five twenty-one, I'm sorry.
Uh, five seventy-three. As of right now with the transfers.
With what?
With the transfers, as they stand right now, we opened the general fund, uh, with five hundred and seventy-three thousand. So quite a bit more than what we normally open at.
So basically, we're just gonna do a correction in. Of the two that we need to do a correction on, but Danielle said it was an option, if you guys didn't wanna start with that big of a cash balance, we can go ahead and.
I don't see any point in that, I think it needs to go into.
Capital improvement.
Yeah, capital, that's what I'm, capital improvement.
Yeah, capital improvement, cause equipment reserve, it should be okay, right, Dan? The two twenty-four, do we need any more than that? The two twenty-four, that's with the sixty-one five hundred that we transferred in?
Yeah.
Okay. This number here includes the sixty-one thousand five hundred that we transferred to equipment reserve?
So currently, the third page that you guys have on that packet shows our starting balances. And equipment reserve started at two hundred and thirty thousand.
What are you guys' thoughts?
Well, should we put some of that into the capital improvements, is it the plan?
Should we do electrical and streets, streets?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it could be used, used any time, right?
Yeah.
In your general, we can put whatever we want, right?
We have to, we have to decide that today, though.
So whatever we put in, you have to use.
That's what our budget allocation, yeah.
But as far as equipment reserve or capital improvement, that's not budgeted, so we can spend that whenever, but general, we can't outspend what we budgeted to spend.
No.
So having that much cash in general.
Still transfer it, we'll release the code on that.
Cause I think we looked at what we transferred in years past and it was a, it was a larger amount that we had transferred years past, so we transferred. What we normally do, but we had a good cushion already in there.
Yeah.
So we didn't look at what our starting cash should have been, we looked at what we did in years past, and so we just missed. That we had a, a correct, that we had a decent enough cushion that we didn't need to transfer. We were just going off of what we transferred years past and tried to match it and we have the extra cash and so we did it and. I don't know that we want that much extra, but general, just, we move it to.
And on the sa, and on the sales tax situation, um, if you guys remember, um, those twenty twenty-three bonds. Came up, so like the very first payment that I had to make last year for the twenty twenty-three bonds, we had to pay them right off of sales tax because we hadn't budgeted for all that. And then, so that's why when Leanne said she just brought in what it said for twenty twenty-four, at that point still, it, they were only considering the twenty twenty bond. Bonds, those, that payment, but we could shuffle that around, so that's why we can, um, reduce what we put into the infrastructure improvement. And then get the, the bond and interest, so that'll include the payments, uh, on the twenty twenty-three bonds. And that way we're sticking with how we've been paying, so we could just pull that up and, you know, the transparency is there for paying it out of that. So it wasn't necessarily wrong at all, it's just those twenty twenty-three bonds, the way that all fell between the budget time and then the project was ready to go. That's the only reason that that happened, so, um. One thing I will tell you that Danielle said, and this was, um, this was something that I didn't know, um. Probably because we just have always done it this way, um. She said that a lot of her cities wait until, some go into February, but she said a lot of them wait, like till the last meeting in January. To do their year-end transfers for the prior year. Um, because, like with C I C, we could, you guys have heard us talk a lot about period thirteen. So we utilize period thirteen up until the audit, so if we have anything that comes in, that'll hit, um, the budget for the previous year. So she said what a lot of her, what a lot of her cities do, they get through that first, um, January meeting where you pay all your bills. And then you've got, um, a.
A better idea to down here.
More accurate figure of your expenses that were for December. And then you can do that, then, then it can be looked at and, um. It was a better, better figures to use because you paid the bulk of your twenty twenty, like for the, in this is, it's twenty twenty-three bills. So that might be something to consider for next year, um, because we do utilize period thirteen, and she said it's acceptable, so.
What's everyone's thoughts on?
Did the auditors give you an amount they would recommend?
No, she said that it was totally your guys' call.
No. Where do we start with the last, two years?
What?
Yeah.
We said three, uh, last year we started at three fifty in the general fund, before that in twenty twenty-two, we started at two fifty. And the year before that, it was one ninety.
And we budgeted to start with two fifty-two eight thirty-one, so I don't know if we wanna stick closer to what we budgeted and move to more of that money.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that covers, that covers all the expenses and everything, right?
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah, get, get closer to that budget and move, move the rest to the capital improvements so we can do more streets this summer and.
Get to three, yeah.
Are you seeing anything coming up?
Or anything else?
I think we've talked about this, equipment reserve, anything major?
Hold on.
Okay.
Which we did spend down some of this last year, two trash trucks and that kinda stuff, so I don't know if we wanna build it.
Yeah.
Do you think that's enough of a cushion or if we wanna build that up or, you know, add a little bit more there and do the majority of it to capital improvement?
On page three, that does have the year to date as well on the far right side of what those funds are at currently.
Yes, there's seven hundred somewhere in there.
So that one is a two twenty-five, kind of, yeah.
Well, we don't have any, anything going on this year with McCormick, right, at all?
Not that I know of right now.
Besides maybe ceiling.
Ceiling, we've got a chip seal.
But. No street projects, so we, we probably need to get the next one of those rolling.
Concrete.
Something.
Yeah, we need to get back on the concrete with Brock.
Yeah, we got a lot of concrete to do.
Get so much done.
We got more now.
Yeah.
Now we got even more. Probably have more water mazes to be fixed.
Can maybe some of the streets still have a special highway?
How much of the jackhammer?
I don't know for sure, that's not there, so I know we're looking at bucket truck where we can find one.
Yeah.
Obviously. Another jackhammer, we'd like to get.
Yeah.
Let's get steer.
Yeah, so we're looking at sixty, seventy thousand between those two, probably?
Probably, maybe a little more.
Maybe more for a bucket truck and.
If we can find used.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so you guys do have a hundred and twenty, well, almost a hundred and twenty-nine thousand in special highway. Um, Leanne said that that's like for new projects, but, you know, could use that for.
Say that again, please?
But you have a hundred, almost a hundred and twenty-nine thousand in special highway.
Right.
Um, but that can be used for new projects, the way it sounds. So there, so you, you do have a hundred and, I'm rounding, not to a hundred and twenty-nine, it's not quite that much, but.
Yeah, we could use that for a street project or something, maybe we use that for some of the. Concrete intersections and that kinda stuff towards, it's not a huge amount, but I, I don't think it could be used for improvement or repair.
Yeah. Yeah, pushes and.
How about fixing? Fixing some.
It has to be brand new.
A brand new road.
I think that that is how I've read the.
Oh, the special, the highway fund?
Yeah, the special highway, I believe it has to be a brand new.
Yeah. Spend it on.
That would be, like, what kind of roads could we have?
How would you, how would you use that?
But I can. I'm, I don't know, but I can, I can look into those parameters again.
Yeah.
Why is that qualifying for, if you're looking at a new project with, where you're doing a street?
She said no, for.
Well, no repair, no maintenance type thing, but if, it's like.
Well, if you're chipping up a street.
If you're doing it all new, like.
You're gonna have to have all things on this street, that's a new street, you know?
But that's not a lot of money to.
Yeah.
Do one block.
A little less half a block.
But I can, I'll definitely look into the parameters.
I thought they said we could use that like if we needed to do any repairs on the access road or.
I thought we needed to do, but.
No, I don't, I don't mean repairs, I mean, like you say, take it down and use surface, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So what do we wanna, what do we wanna do, move around, guys? Take it down to three, you think? That it would have started?
Well.
That was gonna be my suggestion, you know, it's fifty, it's a little, little less than fifty thousand more than what, um, the, the budget says, but that would give you a little bit of a cushion.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um, especially with the stuff that happened over the weekend, right?
Yeah.
Um, cause streets, are they doing that?
No, streets are part of general, streets are part of general, so that's also something to consider.
Yeah, mm-hmm, that's not a bad idea.
Um, and then I think they had a tear, I don't know how much tore up over here.
I feel like we should have three fifty or three seventy-five.
I, I mean, I, you know.
I mean, does that hurt anything to have a little more?
No.
And the way things are looking and costs are still going up everywhere and.
No, so.
But we can always amend, right, if we need to amend our budget, we can always amend it, we'd have to republish it, I mean, there's a few other steps, but.
We're strong in that.
Yeah.
Right, three fifty, that's.
Yes, mm-hmm.
Was a lower than one.
Carry over.
Yeah. Um, so we needed to start, we at least needed to start the general fund this year, um, with a cash balance of two fifty-two eight thirty-one.
And we transferred two seventy-five nine hundred in.
And so then it, it put quite a bit in there compared to what we've done in previous years. I mean, although, you know, I mean, I will say it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to maybe leave three or three fifty, just, I mean, luck of the draw with what happened over the weekend because there's gonna be.
You said it's for highway, but that's also for our roads.
Um, that's special highway, we have a special highway fund that we get, I'm a distributor from the state every, I don't know, I don't think it's every quarter, I think it's about every other month. That, it sounds like that has to be for new projects.
Yeah.
But then other projects, if we have repairs, we can pay that, um, out of, uh, capital improvement.
I'm, I'm good with three or three fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Try three.
Try three, like I said, we could always amend it, if we, if we got in a bind, we could amend our budget and have to publish it and.
Yeah. I'd do plenty of caution, yeah.
Yeah.
So do we wanna transfer the remaining amount of that into capital improvement, or do we wanna add a little of the?
I think maybe both.
Said I don't, can't say that we're gonna need any more in equipment reserve.
Do we have any more?
That's a pretty good balance in there right now.
Do we have any more electrical getting done this summer? All of our feeds, is that all budgeted and accounted for?
Uh, we, we normally pay that out of capital improvement, don't we?
We've been doing two hundred thousand a year.
Do we even have anything on the books for this year, though?
Yeah, they're talking about changing out the corner poles on River Street, so I'm talking about bringing two crews in, so.
Okay.
It won't be here as long, two hundred thousand, but they'll get more done because of the two crews.
Yeah. And then what about transformers, or is there still a chance of getting spare transformers we've been kinda wanting to get? Cause it's still one year wait.
Oh, yeah, probably.
Yeah, so maybe we gotta look at getting ready for, cause we have to buy those upfront, right? So.
Can those be purchased out of capital improvement?
Uh, you don't know that they can, can they?
No, they can't either.
Huh?
Can't either.
I don't think that'd be equipment reserve either, would it?
Probably be.
You know, they would be.
I, I don't know where it's basically, I, 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 I can't speak a hundred percent with certainty, this is just me thinking out loud.
Or utility done.
Um, where that's more of a supply.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that, um.
Capital improvement would be your major infrastructure project.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and, and so, and I don't, I mean, to me, equipment's gonna be things that you're, you know, like the digger trucks, pickups.
Trucks, yeah.
So transformers, that would be an interesting question, I.
How does it go in our utility?
I, that's where I'm guessing that, if you're, if you really want, mm-hmm, I think so.
You'd pay out of utility.
Cause we still need a couple of those pad manner ones, right?
For spare?
Spare.
Yeah.
And we probably need a few others, so maybe we should plan on.
I've been kinda gonna do some checking on that, see.
And you could put some of that money back into utili, utilities as well.
Yeah.
I mean, especially if you guys are serious about possibly getting one of those, you know, some of the bigger transformers in case. So that is also an option as well.
But utility, we're starting out at five hundred.
Four something. Five hundred.
So, and then we're pretty.
Yeah, if we don't have any major replacements this summer, that won't be, that we won't be spending.
Well, then we hopefully don't have any, you know.
Well, yeah, but we, we don't have.
And with that water thing, what, where they were, um, they were talking about. Are we gonna start putting so much back for that? The water, this.
The water system.
Yeah, the water system.
Yeah, water.
I think that's coming out of ARPA funds.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we have to the end of this year to spend the ARPA?
Okay.
What do we have balance in the ARPA? Can I know?
Actually, I just thought, I don't know how long we get spent.
We had talked about doing the.
Right.
The water through the ARPA, but I don't know what we've got.
That I'm not sure on, I know that after the water system, there was supposed to be like forty-eight thousand left.
So we'd have, and that we could use on any infrastructure, correct?
So.
So it looks like, um. So it looks like, um, in, did you get the ARPA funds in twenty twenty-two? We had those before you came over here, right? Okay, so it looks like, um, in June of twenty twenty-two, we've received it in ninety-eight thousand, five hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-two cents for the ARPA funds. Um. You guys must have encumbered in twenty twenty-two to pay, um, Sargent Drilling for the mag meter seventeen four sixty-five oh one. So whatever that balance is. I don't think anything else has been paid for ARPA funds except for this water system that's coming up, right? Sorry, I'm used to a ten key. So, so it looks like you have eighty-one, one twenty, fifty-one is after the Sargent Drilling, and so I don't know, what is the? Is there, there's more than that on the ARPA? Did we get two different?
I believe so, because from my reports that I have to do every year on it.
Mm-hmm.
There was, um.
Do, do you have those up in a file?
Yeah, but I don't know where that file was right this second. Well, basically, we knew we were doing the, the water system out of there and we'd have money left over that we could use for any sort of infrastructure.
How much is the water system? How much have you guys encumbered for that?
Seventy thousand, five ninety-nine.
How much?
Seventy thousand, five ninety-nine, sorry.
That's a word.
Yeah, that's a word.
What cover?
So it looks like you'd have about ten thousand left, unless there was more, um, I, maybe we got ARPA funds in twenty twenty-one, I don't know. Do you guys remember if we got two sections of that?
I think that is.
I feel like we had more than the ninety-eight, though, I feel like there was more than that.
We do.
So.
We do, because. Like I said, the report shows me that I should, that I have more than that. Okay, and I, and all, I literally, alls I have is twenty twenty-two year-to-date revenue, that is all I've got. So I'm just going off of the information that I printed off of CIC, and there was just one receipting of it.
And that's to be done this year.
By the end of this year, I believe.
By the end of this year.
Yeah, just spend it or send it back, so let's get it started. Yeah.
Okay, pretty good there, so.
All right, so, what do we think on?
What's the gas tax fund?
That's the transit gas tax that they have, right? Is that correct? The gas tax is the transit gas packet, so that would charge, like, motels and Airbnbs, so that is the percentage that comes to the city. And that one that gets utilized for any of the tourism, uh.
Or advertising with the tourism and that stuff, as usual, paid out of that.
Have you guys, Dan, have you heard any more about whether McCormick's actually sold out? Cause I haven't heard anything either.
Yeah, I heard this one.
Yeah, they, uh.
I think they sent an email or something.
I haven't, I haven't seen an email from them, like, giving the new information for the company that purchased them, um, but they did request that, you know, we finalize all of the drawdowns and all of that so that she didn't have to do additional paperwork. That was a lovely email, I was like, what?
I just think it's really important that we stay on top of the street work.
Mm, mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm, I'm still a believer that we can do it without occurring any more grant funding laws, so.
Those are great, honey. Yeah.
I don't know, you probably don't have any kind of a feel on what's gonna cost a chip seal or anything like that, what we've already done, a guess even.
What we're wasting, ninety, a little ninety thousand, a little bit, yeah.
What company are you going for?
Quebec Hill.
Good guy.
And we need to do college?
Yeah.
And then the streets that we just did, right? The first round?
Yeah, do all of them.
Not the ones we just did this year.
Yeah, but all of the first round.
All the first round.
Right.
Did we already chip seal college, the north part?
No.
No, folks, big folks, uh.
That's right.
Right now, we need to crack seal it before we do it, you know?
Yeah.
Good, it's a great thing.
Yeah.
On college?
Yeah, so should we?
Right now, so.
Put it in front of the high school.
Yeah. Should we transfer that remainder for general into capital improvement, so we can make sure we have enough to chip seal? And then have the money for electrical and maybe try to get some streets done, and then what's everybody's thoughts? That's good, okay, so our motion to, so we want to leave a balance of?
Three hundred or two fifty?
Three hundred.
Three hundred, right?
Yeah.
So once you guys decide this, um, we need to get it written down, and then in listening to the motion, Leanne and I talked about this, in listening to the motion when you guys did the initial transfers, you guys motioned, like, um, on the ones that you changed. Um, it, it gives the impression that the other stuff didn't get transferred, so I think once we nail this down, we need to somehow include the actual year-end transfers that you approved at the last meeting, um, in December. And then I think that we need a motion, Danielle said it was like a correction or, um, not a correction, but how did she say it worked out? At least, um.
It wasn't better.
Don't you have to pass them in first motion or rego the second one?
Yes, so, so basically, I think what needs to happen, we need to clarify what we did at the December twenty-eighth meeting, was it the twenty-eighth, who is in that meeting? I think you need to clarify that, um, what we transferred in, or what we transferred. Um, and then we need to, we need to specifically write down what you're, um, what we're, uh.
Amending.
Amending tonight.
So do you have those written out, that what we initially did?
Yes.
Can you hand those to somebody that can make that motion?
Who would like to make that motion, and, and really, actually, if you want.
Well, it's probably like, Kael, since he was.
Leanne can read them, like, if Leanne wants to do it.
Like, somebody that was here at that meeting, that.
Which meeting?
The December twenty eighth meeting.
Do you want them to read it?
No, those are, so.
Um, Derek can make the motion.
So Derek was the original one that made the motion.
So, let's get into Derek, let him shoot it.
And so basically, um, I would ju, so however you wanna word it, but you guys get the gist of it, I think you need to clarify what we transferred in December, so I'll give these to you and then I have chicken scratch on it, so then we'll have to figure out whatever the balance is.
So we have to read just the general one for each of these?
Each line, so there's, it's to and from, and you don't necessarily have to read it, I can read it, and then you guys can make a motion to approve those, it's whatever you go.
Okay, go ahead and.
Got that back. Is that December twenty eighth? So at the December twenty-eighth meeting, um, you guys agreed to do the following trans- transfers, twenty twenty-three year-end transfers. Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred from utility to general. Two hundred thousand from utility to capital improvement. Forty-six five from utility to equipment reserve. Thirty-five thousand from sewer to the general fund. Fifteen thousand from sewer to the capital improvement fund. Fifteen thousand from sewer to equipment reserve fund. Two hundred and nineteen, nine hundred and twelve dollars from infrastructure sales tax to the infrastructure improvement fund. Fifty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars from infrastructure sales tax to the bond and interest fund.
So tonight, we make the motion, I make the motion to move from the general fund two hundred and seventy-three thousand, which brings it down to three hundred thousand.
Do I think there's a difference to approve?
Approve what she read.
Yeah.
Just, just make a motion to clarify the transfers of the December twenty eighth meeting.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, approve what she.
Yes.
Second.
Moved by Derek, seconded by Larry, all in favor? All right, now we need to.
So that'll show what we put in, and then we just have to make the corrections.
And now we can make the correction. And Jen, you have those amounts.
I see what she's done right now.
I thought we had those on.
No, I think she's right, we didn't actually go through.
Oh, we. We made a motion to, for the ones we changed, we didn't go, we didn't actually make a motion for the other ones that we didn't make changes to, so.
Oh, my bad. It's more of a technicality, but it just protects everybody.
Yeah, right.
I'll come to the meetings and see what she does. Okay, so tonight.
On this one?
Mm-hmm. Because that, these are the numbers you've used, um, in, for the December meeting, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so tonight, um, we're gonna amend some of the transfers that were made at the December twenty-eighth meeting. So we're going to transfer seventeen thousand, six to the sewer fund, back to the sewer fund, from the general fund, um, to get the cash, beginning cash balance for twenty twenty-four up to where it needs to be. We're gonna transfer thirty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the infrastructure improvement fund and put it in the bond and interest fund, um, so we can pay the twenty twenty-three bond payments out of the bond and interest. And then you're gonna transfer two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nineteen dollars from general to capital improvement.
And that gives you the starting balance of three hundred and fifty.
Almost the three hundred of them.
Are we doing three hundred or three fifty? Of capital improvement, no, we were doing the three hundred on the general and transferring the remainder into.
That's two hundred and seventy-three thousand, nineteen point one three.
We're gonna keep the general beginning that three hundred, right?
Yeah. Sorry, I headed with the three fifty mark. So it's two seventy-three. And I'm just looking at these numbers, so. And that, so I need to clarify, so the two seventy-three, so you initially transferred two hundred and fifty-eight, five hundred from utility to general. And so that's what we're amending. So is that gonna change the transfers to the others?
So basically, you're saying we can't transfer, we can't amend more than what we transferred in?
Well, I think you would have to amend all of those, uh, year-end transfers from utility to the others. I'll remove that one from the total. Oh, I got you, okay, um, okay, so I'm just gonna start over. So the amendments, uh, to the initial twenty twenty-three year-end transfers are as follows, you're gonna take seventeen thousand, six hundred, um, from the general fund and put it back into sewer to get the cash balance where it needs to be. You're gonna transfer thirty-four thousand, three eighty-eight from infrastructure improvements into the bond and interest to make the twenty twenty-three bond payments. And then you're going to transfer two hundred and fifty-five, four nineteen, out of general into capital improvement. And the initial transfer was utility to general fund, so technically, the end result is gonna be, you're, um, transferring two hundred and fifty-five thousand four nineteen from utility.
Into.
To capital improvement, along with the two hundred thousand from the December twenty-eighth meeting. Right, that is correct.
And motion to approve this?
So what is the, so it all stays the same, basically, and the new one now?
The transfer amounts stay the same.
Mm-hmm.
It is just reallocating the funds that they either went to or are going to.
Yeah, I understand, that just seems like we just, okay.
We just, it wasn't really clear at the December twenty-eighth meeting, typically what happens is they're all red, and, um, that way it covers every single transfer.
And we just motioned on the ones that we've changed, so we need to just, we remade the motion and now we need to just make a motion to.
To amend the initial transfers.
Yeah.
So.
Moved by Kale?
Same.
Seconded by Justin, all in favor? Okay, motion passed, are we good then with all of that?
Mm-hmm, so what'll happen is tomorrow, um, I'll get these made, these transfers made, so it's, so we're ready to go. I would suggest, considering next year, maybe waiting until the second meeting in January.
That makes sense, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, can you ballpark me where the capital improvement's gonna end up? After, after the transfers?
Seven hundred-ish, right? Or I guess.
Two seventy-three on there.
Last today, it's gonna be higher than that, so.
Nice.
About four seventy.
Six hundred and ninety thousand. Yeah, so that's.
I have six seventy-two. Kinda give us some. Get some stuff done. All right, resolution twenty-four dash one, the GKA P waiver. This is the annual GAAP waiver, uh, for how we do our audits, um. It's the same verbiage as it has been every year, I just changed the dates. Any questions or do I hear a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash one?
Move.
Moved by Kale, seconded by Larry, all in favor?
Do we have to vote on this?
Yes.
Yes, Bud?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, Larry?
Yes.
Yes, Derek, yes, Justin, yes, all right, resolution passed. Chicken permit in infield. That's a renewal. Seconded by Kale, seconded by Derek, all in favor? Motion passed. Scout hut applications, four H Club and Girl Scouts of America.
Didn't they use that before?
Oh, this one. So four H, they use it, um, let me see if she says. Uh, they normally meet there the first Wednesday of every month at six thirty is, um, for the four H. The Girl Scouts of America, they have not, Girl Scouts here, the local, have used the scout hut, this is the, uh, main branch out of Wichita, they're wanting to put on a summer day camp, uh, type thing for on July ninth. They would like to utilize it and have outside, like, the surrounding counties for their Girl Scout troops to be able to come over and have one location for all of them. Both of them are requesting the rental fee be waived. They didn't put it on there, which I asked them to, but. They didn't put it on there, which I asked them to, but.
I don't look like we need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I couldn't open it, so I'm not sure. But I'm gonna approve it.
So, motion to approve the scout hut applications and waiving the rental fees by Kale?
Yes.
Second by Larry, all in favor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, RV park license from Homesteaders, that is a renewal. Is there a motion to approve that? Bud, second by Dara, should be Jeff, all in favor?
Yep.
You good? Bud, Dara on the Homestead.
Okay.
Renewal, uh tree trimming license renewals from Able Tree Service and Second Chance Ranch. Second, moved by Justin, second by Bud, all in favor? Second chance did they already, or is that, am I thinking of a different one?
No, they, they have not, you were thinking of Jeremy and renewal.
Okay, thank you. And there's.
Yeah, there's also Ricky Mason and Cynthia Welsh, they've also gotten theirs in. Able Tree Service hasn't had theirs in for a few years, but they finally decided they wanted to come back, they keep sending us their insurance certs, so.
Uh, K R W A delegates form.
So in the past, I do believe the delegates have always been the mayor and the superintendent. Uh, last year, I believe it was Dan and Justin though, on it, instead of the mayor. Um, I just need to know how you guys would like me to fill this out for the delegates.
Uh, you just leave it that way?
Whatever you get along.
What do you want?
I'll be at the meeting, so I probably ought to be at least one of them, I guess.
Will Justin be at that meeting?
He's not even on this year. I'll need one there, and if something else comes up.
What do you think?
That's fine, whatever.
You and Justin.
Me and Justin.
Yeah. You need a motion, or you're?
Nope.
Alright, twenty twenty-four water emergency plan. Basically, that's just.
This is a list of the local businesses uh for any time there's an emergency. So for plumbing, for electric, for water, um, who is in charge of what, who to contact in case of these types of emergencies. We've gone through it uh before, I asked Dan to check it out. There are a few on the list that we don't know if you guys want them to stay on the list, or if you guys would like to remove them, like one of them is Sam Miller as one of the local electricians. Yes, he is basically retired, um, or is retiring or something. Um, didn't know if you guys wanted to keep him on the list, but currently he's on the list.
I hate to come out, probably in early, I feel like.
Yeah, I was gonna say, leave him on the list.
Well, that is knowledge of our entire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would leave him on there.
If we spanned the copper in this county, you'd have a list.
Probably have changed everything.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I would leave him on there.
Yeah.
Um, the list did get updated with obviously the new mayor and the new county president. Those were the two changes that I did make.
Alright.
Um, Ross Manufacturing, pump and well, annual number on the pump and well, with the chain of electric.
Mm-hmm.
I think, did they close down the pump and well for?
They sold that out to um.
They sold it out, yeah.
Right, projects, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
I don't know what two things I see.
Do I hear a motion to approve, would that change?
I don't know.
Moved by Justin, second by Bud, all in favor? Uh, EMS building fund. They have budgeted that somewhere.
Mm-hmm. The emails, I'm not right, but he's insured.
Mm-hmm.
I guess we, I think we're allowed to go to commissioners.
Should we go to them, we need just to.
Well, we could get on, maybe, maybe after they decide, I mean, I don't know if commissioners will decide on it, but.
I mean, I think if we got on the agenda, but that's specifically what we're there for, then we'd wait to discuss it. It just seems like a big increase to be just under three thousand short and you wanna double.
Double everybody, yeah.
Everybody, yeah, but I don't know if they've been losing, I'd like to see.
Um, I'm guessing the way I wanna talk to Ryan about, we kinda got thinking maybe the three thousand short was this year of what we paid in, or three thousand short. Cause there's still twenty thousand in the funds, if I remember right.
Mm-hmm. Twenty thousand.
So I'm thinking it was this year we fell three thousand short to what we paid in for the year. So there's still some cushion there.
Mm-hmm. And of course, this is coming from Scott, this isn't coming from the commissioner, they would not decide to change anything.
Right. That's why I said, I don't know if we really wanna jump the gen, get on the agenda and just wait and see what commissioners may, not wanna do anything. But I mean, for this year, the budget's set, there's no way, I mean, if we really do that, the year, we would. We would have to change next year.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I guess we can wait and see what the commissioners are saying, then.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we gave them.
I'd like to see some financials to see if they're, every year in the hole of why they're trying to replenish.
Well, I was gonna have general report, because I don't think we charged them for anything other than light breaks, and we charged that at our cost.
So, we're already giving them.
I don't think we charged them for sewer trash.
Would you mind? I'm gonna go look at that right quick, because I, I started to and then I didn't have time, um. Yeah, I'll be right back.
Okay, well, let's just table that for the moment, then. Old business property cleanup. Probably don't have anything doing. Okay, projects.
There's snow everywhere.
Projects pending. I did talk to Michael Baxter today on the K dot access road, and we plan to schedule him the first meeting in February right at seven, if you wanna put that on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll get, and I need to get that to you, the correspondence we got from K dot, from the last meeting, I forgot to get that to her.
Apparently, there has been a lovely uh verbiage in the newspaper of who could come and actually view. So I did have to inform one citizen today that, no, you can't see it.
Yeah.
So just letting you know.
Okay. Once emails up and running, I will.
I swear, all I did was ask a question.
Why you made a word?
Well, what did I do to you?
You're good?
Yeah, it made me use my else.
Authenticator?
On my phone, letting me a word.
Yeah, it's not letting me use mine, so.
So, anything else on projects pending?
How soon do you think we need to get with Brock if we're gonna do anything down on the intersections?
Probably better get on the bus pretty quick, don't you think? Cause we already have the ones we tabled from, we have Benton and.
And the major street.
Angle, yeah.
Benton and Spencer, that one, right?
Mm-hmm.
There's probably more important ones than Washington.
Cause it's on the north side.
North side. Yeah.
I guess if you. When the, when the snow clears and you can actually see the.
Yeah.
Intersections. Yeah, cause I know that one up there by, on First Street, that one, I thought was pretty bad. Francis First, on the north side. But, I don't know if that hits the worst one. I guess, yeah, get with Brock and at least get tentatively on his. On his radar. Uh, street projects?
Uh, Tim. No, Tom, Tom Parks, our new state monitor was unable to come out to do the state monitoring due to the weather. Uh, he got as far as Abilene and had to turn around, he could not make it here. Um, they are still working on when he can reschedule to come out and do the state monitoring. He needs to be able to see the streets anyways, so. I have not heard anything from Karina as a, as far as an update as to when that's going to be. Uh, we did receive our third drawdown, that's all been processed and out to everyone as well.
Good. Anything else on street projects? Jen, do we, do you have the FO, we'll circle back there?
Yeah, so we just charged them um for electric, we keep track of the water usage, um, for our annual water report. And their current rate right now is um five point seven cents per kilowatt hour.
Is that our cost?
That's gotta be our cost.
Yeah.
So, and I think we, I think we review that like in April or something, so. Anyways. I could do a spreadsheet, but.
But they're not getting charged for electric or water?
Yes, they, they pay electric.
Electric.
Oh, I mean.
At our cost.
At cost, right.
But.
So.
They don't pay water, trash, or sewer.
Right, and I, I, I would be too rushed to do it tonight, um, for accuracy, but I can do a little spreadsheet that shows what the cost would be.
That would be nice to know, just so we know the benefit that the city's providing them.
And it's something to consider, you know, we used to, I, I don't know how much this matters, but you know, we used to keep the books here. So we used to pay everything like they're doing, but then when we turned the building over to the county, then they took what money. Because I believe that we had a separate checking account for it. Um, and so I don't know if they're running it just through their general ledger, or, but we'd probably get to see.
What their actual expenses.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And it, see, and I could be wrong, but it seemed like when I, because I was paying those bills, it seemed like there was only certain things that could be paid out of there. Like that fund was first, you know, like utilities and, but that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
So I can, I can get that spreadsheet, I just, tonight if I tried to do it, I, I would be too rushed.
Yeah, well, let's just wait and see what the commissioners say, and then, um.
I'm sure a lot of the jobs that you asked for, when that needed proof.
But it seems like we were giving them quite the. The benefit on the other utilities that the city provides. So, I guess we'll just leave that alone and.
No, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Just wait and see what the county comes back with, and.
That's just, yeah, that just makes good sense to me.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Hmm, superintendent report, I guess.
I do have a couple building permit things to discuss right now.
Built or built?
Building, one's a building. This is that Brian rather one we talked about last meeting?
Yeah.
So on the variance for that, technically, all we're doing is saying we're giving him permission to.
The variance is coming from the city, I'm having to go.
Yeah, so he don't have to go get signatures, it's just, cause the only person he's affecting is the cities. The city, he's coming into our, our right of way, our.
Yeah.
As opposed to like.
Blind corner.
Variance is with building, or businesses, that's affecting neighbors next door because there's a business in and out, this is a variance just to build within our right of way.
So more, I think all we really need to do is approve, if we approve him to come into the blind corner, that was a ten feet.
Ten feet, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Did you get my email?
Yeah.
Okay.
It should be on there, I kind of, I kind of, but how he wants to do his fence, a little bit of an angle there, it's. But I think all we gotta do is okay the motion for, to be able to come in the ten feet and be right on the right of way with the fence, and we're good to go, and he's good to go. So technically, a variance is us saying we're allowing him to do this stuff. So. And I didn't learn all that on my own, I called the last super.
Yeah.
Yeah, that we talked about, but we told him he had to get so many signatures, and that's more if you get a variance to run a, a business out of your home, as opposed to, the city's just giving a variance to build within that. So it's us giving it to him, not getting permission from the, the neighbors, so.
And I think we need to note in the, when we do the motion or whatever, the reason we're doing this is because it's a controlled corner. Cause that would make a difference on other people coming in, if they don't have stops on the lead corner, we may, we may not wanna let them build in that.
Yeah.
Area. I don't think the traffic will be a problem down there, cause they have to stop.
Yeah.
On Webster.
So we need. Do we need to rescind the motion from last meeting, or we just need to?
Yeah, I don't, probably, maybe, I don't know.
I don't necessarily like that motion, if that was the reason.
I think we might contingent.
Contingent on.
Contingent on the signature, so.
We don't need to.
I think we made a motion to do that, didn't we?
Or did we just?
Yeah, I think we did make, yeah, I think you guys made a motion.
The motion was made by Kale, second by Justin.
The motion was made by Kale, second by Justin.
So.
I'll rescind that motion.
Yes. Okay, so Kale rescinds the motion, uh, approving the variance with the approval of the eighty percent acceptance, do you remake that?
Yes, I'll make a new motion, approving the variance.
From the city?
The variance from the city, yeah.
To encourage in the city's right of way, the ten feet?
To move in. Move in by ten feet.
Second has rescinding that.
And re.
Second, any motion, per, second motion.
Oh, is that all that you needed?
No, pretty painful, I think so.
It's a song, by the way.
You know, that's why I said it.
And then the other one, yes, is a permit, it was David Butler, he did put up his structure for his camper. I got two pictures of it there.
Which he had asked us about the building material before, and then.
And then all of a sudden, he had the building material up for sale, never did a permit, and. I got a call today that they weren't putting it up, so I called David, I said, you did not get a permit, and he's like, oh, I'll go do that now.
Now he has the building.
But there's not gonna be incised to him?
No, that's, it's up just like that, so. And I think he's about five foot off the property line, according to what you sent me and what he's saying, so. And I didn't get this on the drive, cause it was like last Monday tonight, I was running around.
So instead of filming the zone, like he was going to, he just.
Yeah, I wanted to. Oh, it's tall.
Oh, it's tall.
Any questions or do I hear a motion to approve? The building permit?
Sorry.
Move by Kale, second by Larry, all in favor?
Okay, that's all the building permits. So, for superintendent stuff, I need, I got a bid for the heart chemicals. Four thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Who's that here?
Let's see, for instance. Let's see, I'll turn one in. Any questions?
Yes. Move by Larry, second by Kale, all in favor?
Atlas Automation is here working on the water control. This is, this is kind of, that's a quick picture that I took of it. As most of you know, we had two water breaks. One was spent all weekend working on them, one was spent most of the day working on them, so.
What was the water tower one?
Uh, that was, yeah, they were doing the jazz points and we got that on the wall, so.
Did you get the one automated down on West Webster?
Uh, we still have two of them, but it froze on, in the streets on that one. I'm hoping when I start building up street or. I'm hoping a couple more days and it'll break free and, but it's not where I started building up street or, you know.
Where's this one at?
West Webster.
Um. It's Alvin, it's, it's the four hundred block here, West Webster.
The home, Jeff's home, that's his garage shop.
Okay.
Good, yeah, right, I thought that's Robert's shop.
On the corner, on the corner?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And the other one is at Ryan Riley's.
That's just on the other end of the line.
It's where they have his house, but he lives, he live in the shop, so, I don't know, maybe. I'd prefer not to tear up streets, I don't have to, so hopefully they'll thaw. On the transformer project, I wanna do some checking on it, but I won't get you guys to feel. Some of the other cities I've talked to say like on the big mountain transformers, they actually have the people that own them. If they want to spare, they have to help pay for it or pay for it. I don't know how you guys feel about that. Just like hospitals, what we said, it was thirty thousand a year ago. Kinda hard to justify thirty thousand, so they bow back and wait, but it's also hard to justify not having one sitting.
Yeah.
So if you got that one, would it exclusively used for the hospital? Nowhere else in town that wouldn't need that much?
I don't think so.
And then what big worth talking to the hospital and?
What was the green one? What was always there to go?
Well, last year we priced a spare and it was thirty, just a smidgen over thirty thousand, I don't, I don't know what the new one was, I believe that was the. PR ones up here, I don't know what the cost of it is. I don't really know.
And that's all the money.
But now we've changed, we've changed what he was doing then and, you know, they would be upgrading to that and they would have to purchase that. If they were upgrading now.
Mm-hmm.
And I just happened to talk to that guy from another city, he said they. They made a hospital there tran, buy their transformer and they said, well, we want a spare, and he said, okay, but you're gonna buy it. So they built it to them and they're since a spare one, it's there. Because the other problem with a spare is you put it in service ten years down the road, gets out of warranty already, and it don't work.
And she also don't want to. Be a year out of getting a new transformer for.
I know, that's a problem, yeah.
Something like the hospital, I mean, you're kind of in a.
It can't be mucked up and do so long.
Kids, that'd be a lot worse.
Yeah. It should work.
Yeah. I think we only ever had one time, one didn't work and ended up being refused. The company would come back and change it, we might refuse to send back, so we fixed it.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's just an idea, you guys should think about it. This is our question, did we ever have the twenty twenty-four holidays approved? We talked about it, did we have approved?
Every time I bring it up, I have been told that yes, they approved it and it's part of the reclassification.
Okay.
I've asked Lauren about it and she's saying that yes, it was approved, I do not remember.
I just, I don't remember being approved and I wanted to make sure before I tell the guys, you know.
I've, I've, I've never had a motion for it.
We can make a motion, because basically we just, we decided to follow the courthouse, that way people aren't confused when one office is open and one's not, that we were just gonna follow.
Did follow the courthouse.
Which the courthouse follows a lot of the banks and that kind of stuff, so. Follows a lot of the businesses on Main Street, so. I guess we have a motion to.
Do I have a list of the holidays?
What's that?
Do we have a list of the holidays?
I do. Someone.
New Year's.
I think you said that, right?
Yep, Martin Luther, President's Day.
Pretty much every, every set of holidays.
Yeah.
I don't think we wanna word it because we're gonna follow the county though, I think we're gonna do something, because if we would have to switch it around, I think we need to be able to. Without. You know, dealing with the, for some reason, if we had to switch it for a different day or whatever. I hate to say we're gonna follow the county and they'll be stuck to that. When we word it, so. No, I think, does the county, they approve every year?
They approve every year, so we just approve it every January?
I'll say we do that and then.
I don't read it. I don't write it?
Oh, I know.
Okay. But she doesn't know in this, yeah.
I think we just put in the ordinance, says we're gonna approve it every January, fill this to the holidays and then. And then if something has to change, we don't necessarily have to go back in and.
Because then if you have a holiday.
Redo the whole ordinance, you know.
Weekend, because they're not technically federal holidays. Those aren't. Yes, I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four. Move by Justin, second by Kale, all in favor?
And on the water leak thing I should have brought up, just so everyone's aware, that was a brand new street we had to tear up, the concrete on. And the one over at the park was a lot of new scene that got tore out. Curbin gutter and sidewalks, so.
Does that go just on the side the whole way or does it go cut across? The water, I mean, does it cut across the whole length, tell me what it said?
The park?
Well, like on the new concrete on Francis, does it just stay towards the meter or does it cut across and go across the street?
It just runs north and south with the meter and then they got yard lines that come off the meters. And it ended up being a lot more than we planned because we, you gotta start somewhere, so you start where it's coming up and then all of a sudden it moves.
I was wondering, in the future, if you're gonna have a concrete, it'd be better, does it move the water line?
I don't know what that would entail, to move a water line?
Well, that one's just be a section. But, you know.
Move it where though?
Until you're right of way out of Curbin gutter, on the other side where the meters. Because if you have, like you said, compaction, if they're compacting it before their basin and you gotta look step in there and all they're gonna do is just.
Yeah, we're wondering if some of these weren't caused from compaction. Because when they did like Francis Street, they compact, they, they had to do compaction tests before the engineers would have worked concrete. So they compacted it hard.
And why weren't that addressed when they did it?
I mean, you hope that they, it doesn't mess it up, but you just don't know, I mean, you don't know if that's what's doing it or not. And over here it was, but I think they said they found some crushed concrete underneath that water line. So that means when they were compacting the crushed concrete and they had to push under the water line or something.
Or at least check the water line before, or if it's good line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But sometimes, you know. How deep is that though? It was the main?
Yeah, oh, you're talking Francis?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is almost six foot.
How old is that line?
How old is that section of town?
Yeah.
I mean. But I know they didn't, weren't you guys gonna do new water lines at one time and then Lauren and Associates come out and did a study and said we were good?
That sounds right.
Well, that was before my time was sudden here, but I, I remember something about that when I started working in the city.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it sounds familiar.
Because I think there was a whole project thing down at the plant for a while and then. JR had my associates come in after Rob left and they said everything was good, we didn't need to do anything, so. That's how we worked for it.
Of course, that's been twenty-five years ago.
Yeah.
Or twenty, maybe.
Well, you know. JR's here twenty years, right?
Mm-hmm.
So fifteen.
But I feel like we've had to check within.
Since, no.
Mm-hmm. Guess it'd be worth a call to. Knowers and just see.
Yeah.
Double check with them, to see if.
But I remember we got new streets down in all places now, you don't turn out, we have to, you know.
But just see if they actually did something. And how long ago it was, that they looked at. Don't you think, just.
Yeah.
Check and see.
And the only other thing I have for you guys is I need probably two minutes executive session for knowledge of personnel for job performance.
Any other questions for Dan, if not, is there a motion to accept and approve the superintendent report?
I have no question. Um, do we know what our output is? I, I know I asked you last time, but I can't remember if I followed up. On the generators. Did you have that?
I. Have it down in my office.
Okay.
I'll call you.
Yeah, we'll talk tomorrow or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, motion by Dara.
Second.
Second by Kale, all in favor?
It's close to six, maybe though.
Six, maybe once?
Clerk report.
So out on the shirt, I don't know if you guys can see it, I have a clerk folder, um. I received a couple of documents from TAP. Uh, they have actually been granted a seed grant for the TAP park. Um, they wanted, they sent it to me and requested that I sign them. And I didn't feel right signing them without you guys reviewing them first. One is um. A harassment policy and then one is the. Certification of company not currently engaged in the procurement or of, of payment of certain equipment, services, or systems. They figured the city should sign, seeing how it's our property.
Have they ran them by Lauren?
Huh, I have not.
Have you ran them by Lauren? I guess I would maybe make sure she's. Read through them and make sure that she's okay with us, with you signing them. What are you guys thoughts?
Yeah, I think I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I did reach out to the clerk link in regards to snow removal. Um, and if they permit, license, do anything with their individuals, uh, they're independent contractors or whatnot. Uh, I got several responses and the one that I decided I would print out tonight is from Marysville. Um, they said that they do not license or sell permits for the contractors. Uh, if they damage someone's property, it's between them and the owner. Um, and if they damage city property, they seek restitution, that's all they do, they don't. They don't do anything else regarding it. Um, it was basically the same answer from everyone, the other two that did respond, they don't permit.
Do they allow it though?
They do allow it, they just, they don't permit it, they.
So how many cities responded?
Only three. That's very sad about that.
And that reminds me of, since you brought that up.
Yeah, you gotta put it out there.
I put pictures on there. Of snow piles. It rerouted the water from the snow, the water leak right into somebody's backyard.
I'm just pressed multiple than we.
Who's that?
Huh?
Who was it, who was that girl?
Uh, Rob. He's a Laney. It basically bounced off one snow pile, went across the road, bounced off the other pile, went right straight down there, eighty yards, until it finally cut a path under the snow.
Who's that?
Laney, is it Laney or Long?
Laney, wrong.
It's Laney.
That's what the pictures of the snow piles were.
I see some of your pictures, but some of them I'm not quite understanding, I don't see no piles, I just see some roads.
It's under a folder called Snow Piles.
I got, I got some of them with piles, some of them just dry ones.
I think that it's probably just showing it flooded his backyard.
Oh.
Yeah.
There was that one.
Yeah, I know.
I can't.
It just leaves way around down in the alleys, right?
Should be able to top.
Is it in the email?
Well, I can't.
It curves.
Yeah, um, so that was probably.
I don't know.
Yeah, those are the ones in the streets, yeah, so that was, um, perspective wise, that's, um. That's on the east side of Denison, down there. And then the alley's talking about is, then if you go back to that other picture.
Let me go back, huh?
Yeah.
Why is that?
So then I'm guessing that's the other snow pile, I'm gonna make a daily alley.
Here's the one that I think.
And I think that's the problem we have is people don't realize. When they pile the snow, what?
Well, I just took the pictures because that's what. He called and said something about the snow piles, so. I just took the pictures to basically say, this is what happened when I started to pile snow and gutters and.
Justin, you said Goodland doesn't allow them to move snow?
Uh, one time they didn't allow that, anybody to be on the street, we couldn't pile anything on the street, I don't know where they're now.
Dan, would you wanna look into that with Goodland, just to see? And I think just with, talking with Justin Gardner. That he had mentioned that every single one of the guys have said they've almost hit somebody, because they come flying on four wheelers off side streets, pushing stuff into the middle of Main Street when they're trying to. Blade it and, I mean, I think we're just an accident waiting to happen to, the city has a liability issue if we hit somebody, if we don't, you know. I mean, I don't know how that would work, it might be a question for Lauren, but.
I know, keep, I would, you know, did catch it, but. If we move it to the middle and wait for the next day for them to move it wherever, and the next day we pile it, uh, put it back in there without doing that. Then they have the whole day of putting in there and we just. Then, then they.
But they're not supposed to be putting it on.
Why does it yell it's a main street, why does it go main street?
Uh, probably got on Main Street, we got a couple other individuals that have, out there snow and put it on Main Street.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And the problem you have. People complain that the guys aren't out early in the morning, well, the guys get out early in the morning and then you have all the businesses come in at seven thirty and they push all the snow off.
Well, sometimes it goes early morning, cause it's still snowing.
Yeah, but, but they come in and they make a pass and then everybody pushes the snow out to the street and then it freezes and then.
Yeah, well, that's, that's one of our problems, I don't want a problem, Main Street put it in there, get it out there.
It's just coming from every side street and memory, yeah.
It's just from everybody else, yeah.
One of the problems, this is unfortunate.
Well, thank you. It's unfortunate.
What's that?
It's unfortunate.
That's my point.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Can I just get some complaints about the snow pile in Washington, by the post office? Again, by, what was it, Jackson? Which one, uh, which one is it, Adams, Jackson Adams?
Yeah.
It's the center of, yeah, huge pile there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That's one of the streets you were talking about, that one, those are the pictures.
No, that street is.
Denison?
Denison, North Denison.
With some piles, you just can't, what's more, the signal traffic anyway, it's too hard.
Mm-hmm. Well, but when individuals move themselves onto the corner and it's blocking your drainage and then it's.
And then they drew out last time, like Main, it seems like it quit. To clean up the mess that people were pushing on and, and.
Mm-hmm. That seems like even, I mean, I.
But then, I can't, I went out at nine ninety twenty over there.
But what do you tell them to do with it then? You know, I mean, that's the thing, you know, or do they go with it, no?
Yeah. Well, but these are coming from side street, these are coming from parking lots and alleys and they're pushing it around there and then down the Main Street.
Oh. Mm-hmm. Hmm. And then if they wanna clean up their own driveway and haul it off.
And then somebody that's probably making fun.
Push it back, you know, put in their, their grass, but it's a part that they're pulling it out in the street and they're leaving it piled, well then, as things start melting.
Yeah. Well, it's, these things are.
It's probably on the. Yes, we're gonna do some more research into it, but.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said. We could do all the, you know, but.
Yeah, that's somebody who forces it to. And we need to see if he wants to respond more, so I think we need to respond. Maybe somebody will?
No, you should come in. Um, so. Out on the sheriff, I put out there for the, um, US thirty-six membership. Uh, it's our annual membership through them, we normally do the silver packet, I wanted to verify which one you guys wanted to do.
The price is still the same?
Yes, it's still a hundred dollars for the silver, fifty for the bronze, and two hundred for the gold. So that we have it ready for the next meeting for the payment vouchers.
Keep it safe.
Yeah.
Good.
I'm hoping this is out there, um. I received an email in regards to, uh, from Northwest Kansas Community, or Northwest Kansas Planning and Development. Um. They have their CDBG Program Twenty Twenty Four Road Show. Uh, it is going to be held Thursday, February eighth, um, at nine thirty in Hill City. I didn't know if you guys wanted anybody to go to it, to see what all they are planning on opening up for grants this year. Uh, they gave a list of economic development, community facilities, sidewalks and trails. Nonprofit childcare, housing rehabilitation, commercial rehabilitation, regional water implementation, and youth job training are on here. I didn't know.
Is Chris from CCDC gonna be going?
Probably, not sure, I would bet she is.
I think, I think she will.
I think she would too, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so just get notes from her?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless somebody wants to go.
Okay, I also put out there the upcoming seventy-fourth Annual CCMFOA Spring Conference, it's going to be held in Manhattan this year. Um, March twentieth through the twenty-second, is that the same week?
No.
For the twenty, for the twenty eighth of September.
Through the next week. Okay, it's the week prior to the water show. Um. It's the same one that I went to last year, didn't know if you guys wanted me to attend it again. I haven't received any of the ones for the league or for the corp, um, the C A K, I believe it is.
Did you find it beneficial?
I did, I mean, I, I found a lot of them beneficial, they have really good lectures, teach, um. Points, I guess you'd call them, um. They normally bring me home with more questions than answers. Um, ooh, I wanna look into that and then of course I'm buried and don't have time, but they do get me thinking on other aspects.
Everybody good with, yeah, good?
Yeah.
And that is all that I have. That I'm aware of.
Any questions for Lain, if not, there's a motion to accept and file the clerk report.
Same, second.
Moved by Kale, second by Justin, all in favor? Okay, motion passed. Uh. Council comments, Bud?
No, uh. The sheriff kinda sent somebody to me to, about truck parking. And, uh, it really wasn't my place to even. He come to me and was hollering about his truck and reparked and reparked and. And it was hollering about a, uh, supposedly a permit he can get, which I've never heard of.
And there is an ordinance, but it, it talks very specific date and time that it will be parked there, so it's more of like a one time?
I to, I told him to come to the council.
And so he did talk to the sheriff and he did talk to Jen and basically, without direction from. Our legal counsel, we told him to hold off for the time being until Lauren gets back to town, but she is back in town, but, um. We want direction from her as far as the way the ordinance is worded and her legal advice before we move forward.
Yeah, I, I told him, I, wasn't anything I could do.
Yeah.
And I told him, like, I don't like, this is my problem up there, being a truck stop.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he insists that he's gonna park up there and, and I've already told all my in-town people, it's not for in-towners back there, it's for overnighters.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so.
But it is against city ordinance to park your trucks on city streets overnight, so that is against city ordinance.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you know, but, uh, like, I just referred back, I said I, I'd mention it at the meeting, that's all I'm doing.
Okay.
I'm not asking, I'm just mentioning what come up. And, uh, I told him he needed to go back to the sheriff or the state house, come to the council, whichever, but that's where I left it out.
Well, on that same subject, where are they supposed to park? I mean, we can't rule out truck drivers in the city of St. Francis, I mean.
No, I think the ordinance says that the city could designate truck parking.
I'm trying to say that, you?
The city can designate truck parking.
Oh, no.
So, but I don't. But where, like, how said, where? I mean, higher motel property, I don't get it, like, I mean, I don't know what you do.
There's no huge terminal they can leave their truck at and, you know, park there.
Yeah, I, what I also get.
We're kind of in a.
The, the reasoning why is they, they start them up early in the morning and let them run.
Oh, yeah.
They're waking neighbors up, I mean, they're tearing up streets, I mean, causing blind corners, you know, if they don't have adequate parking.
All it just carries up the street too.
There, there's a, there's a lot that we can open up with allowing it.
Yeah, he, he claims not to.
Yeah, but we also have trucks all summer going down the streets with wheat and. What's the difference really? I feel like there's gotta be some solution for people that live here, who happen to live in town.
I. I, I, I agree, I, when the parking disappeared up on the highway for them.
Yeah.
And we put that EMS building up there, that eliminated all of our truck parking in town.
Yeah.
There's a place where it used to be hotel.
Yeah, there's a nice lot there, might be a little muddy, could get stuck.
Yeah, yeah.
Something I can do.
Yeah.
Or that.
Or. Without my, that, my recycle center, by the dollar, you know?
I don't know if the city has any property that we could set aside for some trucks. I mean, it would be a good idea for this town to have somewhere to park trucks.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I know he could, he insisted he needs to park at his house, well.
I like it, that he wants to plug it in and it's cheaper for him to plug it in at his house than it is to pay somebody else for electricity.
Yeah.
Right.
I get that, but we also have it in our ordinance, it's against the ordinance to park on city streets and I get why it's in there as well, so I don't know what you.
Yeah.
And it doesn't say the city has to designate truck parking, it says the city can designate a location for truck parking.
Wouldn't be something to consider down.
Yeah, I think we have to figure something out, because. What are they gonna do? They have nowhere to go with it.
That's their job, I mean, that's their livelihood.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I also get the concerns from neighbors and.
Well, yeah, certain areas might.
Yeah, but, but like we're saying, we find somewhere else, maybe that we can. Yeah, figure something, yeah.
But I think, where this guy's at, he's not blocking any driveways, there's, I don't think he's on a blind corner or anything.
Yeah, he's on a corner.
He's on a corner.
Well, his house is.
He's blocking the corner pretty hard, any parts here.
He's blocked, he's, yeah, he's blocking, yeah, he is.
Oh, really?
Yeah. He's, he spoke about that to me personally.
Oh.
Yeah, and he's the one that we've had complaints about from neighbors, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
He's trying to park in a matter of a minute, he can park a truck.
Yeah.
Well, he has.
Anyways, yeah, I mean, we left it with him that we need to talk to Lauren to get legal advice before we can move forward, but it's something to think about.
I don't think we have any mods anywhere we could use.
All right, Kale, you have anything?
Um. Not, not really, I still wanna look at future generator. Down the road, something, sometime to back up, cause I don't know how long ours is gonna last. I mean, look at the problems we get, getting it fixed. Things breaking, we don't get a repair guy for months. It might be really screwed someday, so. Just wanna have that on the, on the burner.
Back burner?
Yeah, on the burner.
Good.
That's it.
Larry?
All I go is, thank you guys and, and yourself for all the hard work over the weekend, that was a tough deal, yeah.
Thank you guys for buying supper.
Well, that's, that's why, that's, huh, that's why it should have been.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Derek, you have anything? I, I don't have anything, Justin?
Um, same thing, thank you for the hard work. I'd just kinda like to go, if I could do a walkthrough with you.
Yeah. One time, just you and Cole.
And I guess we just need a motion for executive session for non-elected personnel for job performance for two minutes for Dan.
Who, everybody or?
Uh, Jen Zleben? Yeah, so, everybody but Jen, she's gotta go.
So maybe going to executive session for two minutes, coming out at nine oh seven. Uh, for non-elected personnel for purpose of job performance with everybody included in the room. Second.
Second, move, move by my second by.
Executive session, the decisions were made, we have a motion to adjourn. Larry? That's a whole stand-up, we gotta stand up, that's our motion.
You have to start walking out the door.
Yeah.
Larry couldn't.
There's a place in Brighton that sells.